The December 15th, 2022 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Treibroisser?
Here.
And Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows. On January 11th, 2022, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, Post Ed in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Molnar, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go with the closed session in order to discuss subjects exempt from the public portion of our meeting. The discussion to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client privilege advice.
I have a motion.
Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Treibroisser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibroisser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Bourdain. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Wolferman, please introduce our... No, Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notice of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the 2022-23 school year, we opened the following bids. On November 29, 2022, IFB 23-21 Student Transportation Services for General Education, and IFB 23-22 Student Transportation Services for Homeless Student.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Secretary, please introduce our student representative from John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, Christine La Woda.
Thank you. Christine La Woda is a standout student who ranks in the top 10% of this year's senior class. Continuously displaying her dedication to success with her intellect and academic achievements, Christine has excelled during high school by challenging herself with honors-level curriculum in English and mathematics, as well as AP History courses every year. She needed only three years to complete Spanish 1 through 4. Christine's spring schedule includes a college-level super forensics course that upon completion will translate into five lab sciences in just four years of school. Quite impressive. As a varsity athlete, Christine has pushed her physical limits by competing on the JFK Swim Team for all four years, and this year she was named captain. Christine has demonstrated her time-management skills and commitment by waking up early for winter swim practices and dedicating herself to a healthy lifestyle. Christine is a true leader. Not only is she the captain of the swim team, but Christine was elected junior class vice president, and she has been actively involved with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee for the past three years. Christine has done all this while maintaining involvement in Student Council, the National English Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Heroes and Cool Kids, and the American Cancer Society. Christine has given all her all during her time at JFK, balancing academics, athletics, activities, and even finding time to work as a part-time manager at Chick-fil-A. This commitment, along with her confidence and independence, are the epitome of a young woman ready to take on life with enthusiasm and preparedness. Christine has applied for college and is anxiously awaiting her decisions, for such a well-rounded individual, success is undoubtedly inevitable.
Christine?
Hello, everybody. Today I'll be talking about all the activities done by the schools in our Woodbridge Township School District, starting with School 1. Some activities that they've done was they collected food and donated it to the St. James Food Pantry for Thanksgiving. They also hosted a Veterans' Day, which was celebrated on November 4th, and the PTO also provided a Thanksgiving feast on November 23rd, as well as creating a pep rally calling it "Community of Caring," which was held on November 30th. Our next school is going to be School 19. The Student Council collected food for Thanksgiving, donating all items to the St. James Food Pantry as well. A Veterans' Breakfast was held on November 4th, and the breakfast donations were received from Pomptanian, BJ's, Wegmans, Chick-fil-A, Dunkin' Donuts, and ShopRite. Indigenous Peoples' Month was celebrated by the students with teacher-made Native American instruments. The school-wide celebration was held on November 23rd with music and student-made totem bowls. At School 29, the Student Council raised $717 for St. Cecilia's Food Pantry. And moving on to Ford's Middle School, they had... They hosted a Fall Fest, a school-wide SEL program, which was a success. The student and staff participated in many fun activities to encourage teamwork, utilize and build social skills, and create a positive rapport amongst our school community members, as well as the 8th grade science classes completed a problem-based learning DEI lesson to connect earth structure to study Native American home building for Indigenous Heritage Month. The Ford's Middle School Choir also performed for the holiday extravaganza on December 2nd at the Community Center. The Student Council will also be collecting new and unopened toys and games throughout December 9th for the Woodbridge Township Community Center. And the Ford's Middle School Chorale, Choir, and Showstoppers, along with the Concert Band, Symphonic Band, and Wind Ensemble, will be performing for their winter concert on December 14th at 7:00 PM at the FMS cafeteria. Moving on to John F. Kennedy High School, our senior Supraj Gunda had been awarded a full four-year scholarship to attend Princeton University through the Questbridge National College Match Program. Supraj is one of only 1,700 students selected from 18,000 applicants across the country. And on November 1st, the National Honor Society held a blood drive in conjunction with the RWJ Barnabas Health. And on November 16th, members of the choir sang at the National Adoption Day Ceremony held at the Middlesex County Courthouse. And on November 16th, 18th, and 19th, the players performed the fall play "Almost Made" at JFK. On November 21st, members of the Family Career Community Leaders of America, also known as FCCLA, competed against over 50 other schools around the state. Seven JFK students took home first-place gold awards with Savannah Extence, who also won a $2,000 scholarship. Continuing with JFK Memorial High School, the Spanish, French, and Chinese Honor Societies combined to induct 41 new members on November 29th. The school's equity team celebrated National American Heritage Month with an after-school viewing of Te Atta. And the Business Honor Society collected toys, games, and that were donated to Toys for Tots. And finally, the concert band and choirs performed their winter concerts on December 8th and the 13th.
Thank you very much, Christina. That was very impressive. Christine, if you'd like to stay for the rest of the board meeting, you're welcome to do so, but if you have other plans or such as studies or anything, we will totally understand.
All right. I appreciate so much. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize the principal at JFK High School, who's coming out to support his student, Dr. Paris. Thank you. Mr. Wolferman, please state for the record the superintendent's report for the month of November 2022.
I present the following monthly reports. The student registers and fire to a report, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with a specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak.
Yes. Good evening. Tom Maris, Ford's New Jersey. I'd like to call your attention to the finance and insurance and number six therein. It seems like the budget has really gone wacky. It's gone up by $18 billion, because what you have here is $329,543,97,008. I think that's a typo error.
Is that all your... Your only comment on that agenda?
I'd like to clarify, but then I'd like an explanation of why the 18... Actually, $18 million and change is what it should represent. Why is it up $18 million?
Is that all, Mr. Maris?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Wolferman?
Yes. Mr. Maris, the reason that this money is shown as $18 million, this is ESER III money, which was started with us last year, last school year. We did not spend it all. In order to use it in the next year, we're required to roll it over to the following year. So that is what this... The rollover numbers on that page represent. They're just monies that we first got last year and are now being applied towards this year.
You're increasing the budget by that amount. Is that not correct?
That is correct. The overall budget does include that.
And what are the plans for that money, then?
The ESER funds are being used in part for health and safety projects throughout the districts, as well as mental health, social-emotional learning, and catching up for the learning loss that was suffered during the pandemic.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I wanted to just add some further color to that. The fund... The $17 out of the $18 million that Mr. Wolferman just alluded to are federal funds that were part of the three recovery packages that President Trump and President Biden, combined with the approval of Congress, had appropriated to the states and, on a formula basis, were sent to the school districts for learning loss recovery and, you know, infrastructure and capital improvement. So, yeah. ESER, you know, we throw that word around, and I would imagine most of the public doesn't know what that means. Frankly, I wanted to look it up, too. Typically, it's... It just has to do... It's an acronym for, you know, Elementary and Secondary Education Funding. So it's E-S-S-E-R. It's just a federal grant program that we were fortunate, like every other school district in the country, to be recipients of. And again, as Mr. Wolferman had alluded to, we've begun projects, and because we're in the new fiscal year, it's simply rolling over from last year's fiscal year into the current fiscal year. And again, it's funds for very worthy projects, again, such as learning recovery and replacing the univentilators at our schools. Some of those univentilators, as Mr. Pagli, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, pointed out to me, many of those haven't been replaced outright since 1984. So now we're going to move to the highest level of univentilators. That's the exchange of fresh air in and out of the classroom. So we're bringing the oldest schools up to the very highest standards of clean indoor air. So I just wanted to clarify those couple points. So thank you, Mr. Wolferman. Good answer. Just wanted to put a little more color on it. And Mr. Velez, thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Hey, Mr. Wolferman, do you have any recommend superintendent's agenda? Mr. Wolferman, do you have any recommendations?
Yes. On behalf of the superintendent, I have 21 items on the superintendent's agenda to present to the Board.
I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treibroisser, second by Ms. Perez. All in favor? Are there... I'm sorry. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
I'll be abstaining on item number nine. Yes on all the rest.
Mr. Treibroisser?
I will be abstaining in my name on item number nine. Yes on the rest of the items.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Ms. Bourdain?
I apologize. I need to abstain on item number nine as well.
So noted.
Thank you.
Policy and Planning Agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
AJ, Ms. Sedana?
I just wanted to bring to the attention of everyone here that we, for Woodbridge, and HSS, together with Mr. Ali and cooperation from the administration, were able to collect 13,000 pounds of food for the Seo Adewole Food Drive. So I'd just like to recognize that and thank Mr. Ali for all his efforts.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Secretary... Uh, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes. Curriculum Agenda, Mr. Treibroisser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion, Mr. Treibroisser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes. Finance and Insurance Agenda, Mr. Treibroisser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibroisser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes. Security and School Safety Agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Security and School Safety Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion, Mr. Treibroisser. Do I have a... Uh, Mr. De La Pietro, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes. Athletics and Extracurricular Agenda, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second is Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes. Buildings and Grounds Agenda, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following. Tonight, I'll be moving one item.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Treibroisser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes. Transportation Agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes. Equity Commission Agenda, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Commission Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Motion by Ms. Anderson. I have a second by Mr. Treibroisser. Are there any questions, comments, or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes. Personnel Agenda, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following. Tonight, I will be moving 34 items.
I have a motion, Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
Just before voting, there are 35 principals and vice principals in our district, all of them very good and hardworking. With 1,900 employees trying to rise as a teacher to a principal or vice principal, it's very difficult, very challenging. We're... Tonight, we're blessed with having two openings for, you know, two of those teachers to move up into their principal ranks. There are... There will be some... There will be dozens of disappointed candidates, but I do want to say, you know, don't be discouraged that you didn't get selected. Keep on working hard, and, you know, perhaps one day your opportunity will come. My heart is heavy, because I know there were some good candidates who were being bypassed this evening, but out of respect to the administration for their diligence and their process and explanation of their process, I am comfortable that, you know, in voting in favor of this evening's recommendations. But I did want to give that shout-out to those out there tonight who are disappointed that they were not selected. You know, keep on working, and your opportunity will come. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
In item number seven, I'll be voting no on the name Lee Musco. Nothing against the employee. I don't know him. I just felt that this position in that school, that environment of the school, should have been filled from within the district. I, as Mr. Harris, do applaud the administration for your hard work and diligence in the interview process. This is just my personal opinion, and I'll be voting no on that name. And on item number 24, I'll be abstaining on the name Charlie Molnar. Yes on all other items.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
I will be abstaining on the name of Linda Treibroisser on item 20. Yes on all other items.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations?
I don't, Mr. President. Thank you.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? Is there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? Mr. Harris, please.
That almost passed me by there. I wanted to just make one recognition of something in the news that's relative to us here on the Board. Governor Murphy, in, I believe it's November, established a T-shirt task force for the shortage of teachers. It's... Here in our district, we're blessed to have a higher-than-average pay scale, so the shortage is not as acute here in Woodbridge Township for all positions. However, there is a shortage of, you know, certain minor languages, teachers, you know, Spanish, French, you know, the sciences are very difficult to fill, physics, chemistry, and so on. So I wanted to just recognize Governor Murphy and the 25 or 26 different individuals who are serving on this task force, who are charged with making recommendations by January 31st to the state to help augment and rebuild the pipeline of individuals going into the teaching profession. It's... You know, I think Mr. Sedana could speak to this. The guru, teachers are among the most respected professions in many cultures, including our own. Unfortunately, the profession is... The numbers are no longer there in terms of the students going into college and coming out of college. Thus, there's a smaller pool, and that impacts the quality of education throughout the country. And that's not with any disrespect to those new teachers that we have and any other school district has. But the more that go into the teaching profession, the better the selection, and frankly, the better the product in the classroom. So I want to just recognize Governor Murphy for taking that issue on, and hopefully, whatever comes of it, whatever recommendations come of it, are implemented, and they have the effect that we're looking for. And finally, I'm often up here talking about vocational technical school and all those traditional trades, where in even greater numbers, there are less and less people going into the teaching profession in some of those traditional trades. We need plumbers and electricians and carpenters just as much as we need scientists and lawyers here. So, you know, I hope this task force is able to accomplish what we need in terms of rebuilding the teaching ranks, so our future is brighter in the days ahead. Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Mr. President, my... On the superintendent's agenda, my vote was intended to be on abstention on number nine and number 21, and yes to all other items.
Thank you. So noted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bourdain?
If I may?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Patton, who is retiring this month from Matha Jago School after 50 years, maybe even 51 years of teaching there, and 30 years of serving as the principal of the PACE program. He will be missed greatly by everyone that I know and through the district. And Joe, I want to thank you for a great year. Thank you very much for your presidency.
Thank you. Okay. We will now open the meeting for public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak.
Five-minute countdown. Good evening. Paul Lund, Hopeplon Section. I was talking to my cousin, a retired Woodbridge police officer down in Myrtle Beach not too long ago, and I mentioned I've been having some interactions with a fellow officer from Woodbridge, and I wondered... I asked him, "Do you remember Mr. Velez?" And he said he remembers him as an upstanding guy. So I just wanted to mention that Mike Dahlia gives his regards from down Myrtle Beach. He was a K-9 cop for a little while as well.
I know Mike well. Very good cop. Good guy.
Fellow peace officer. So thank you for that. I just want to introduce a couple facts here. It's a very sensitive topic, but I want to mention that the fact is abortion is a violent end to a developing human. Anyone calling it reproductive rights is masking that fact. Three State Board of Ed members were removed and replaced by Governor Murphy simply for questioning the timing or the speed with which they launched the new comprehensive health standards. I know under cover of COVID, it was developed from 2020, but four of the Board members objected on the grounds that abortion was made... Taken too lightly in the curriculum. They thought also that there was little thought given to parents' views on this very sharply divisive issue. Having replaced three of these four State Board of Ed members, now the word has gotten out that behind closed doors and closed session, they've decided that sex ed going forward, instead of dividing by biological sex, boys and girls are going to divide by gender identity. So there'll be boys in a class learning about a menstruation cycle that they will never experience, and there will be girls in a class learning about nocturnal emissions that they'll never have. No amount of hormones is going to change that fact. I bring that up because New York Times just came out a report on puberty blockers. Now, we know New York Times is a fairly progressive paper, and I quote from the article, "The existing research is limited, but researchers have found that the treatment, i.e. puberty blockers, for, I think, as young as 14, and Mr. Bush, you might be able to correct me, can help ease the..." Or maybe 16. "ease the anguish of adolescents who feel they were born in the wrong body. Some doctors and patients describe it as life-saving. But we also found emerging evidence of potential harm from the drugs, including possible long-term effects on patients' bones and brain." With this kind of data coming out, and this is not the first report of this, is it appropriate and responsible for this body to reconsider delivering education on gender fluidity, gender as a choice, as opposed to gender and sex as biological fact, to elementary school students in Woodbridge? students in Woodbridge? The last thing I would ask, and it's, it's a little bit off to the side, if you were to reverse direction and reconsider delivering that, I hear that the governor has made threats against schools or school districts that dare to, to challenge these new extreme sex ed standards. What are your CUSAC scores? Because I understand that if you don't deliver through your comprehensive, or through health classes, this portion, these revised standards, that you might lose as much as two points off the CUSAC scores. How can I find out about the CUSAC scores of the district? Last question, I think, with one minute left. Last session, a question was asked about your policy concerning a student who decides or comes in and wants to be addressed with different pronouns, wants to dress differently at school. According to the state guidelines that were handed down by Governor Murphy a couple of years ago, I think 2018, the schools have no affirmative duty to report to parents. I want to know definitively and with a straightforward answer, Mr. Bush, is there a policy in the Woodbridge School District concerning informing parents of some very critical decisions that students may be making without the parent's knowledge? That's all my questions.
Is that all, Mr. Lund?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Velez.
Some of your questions might be better addressed by Mr. Bush and CUSAC question maybe by Doc, Mr. Passerino.
Yeah, I, I, I read that article, I think you're referring to, in the New York Times, I just don't remember exactly what it said, and I'm not familiar exactly with the age on the puberty blockers issue. You know, I, I don't think that it's correct to say that the governor has made threats. I do think that there are state guidelines, like there are across all categories, that, you know, school districts have to follow, and, and part of the reason for programs like CUSAC, for example, and I know I'm bouncing around questions, but they all sort of relate to each other, is because the, the state has come up with a universal standard to ensure that school districts are teaching what they believe are appropriate. Obviously, you have disagreements with that, but I've said to you, I think, many months and respectfully, over the course of maybe a year now, that if you have concerns with the state curriculum, that I highly encourage you, if you haven't already, maybe you have, I don't know, but to go to Trenton when they have their meetings, there's a public portion just like there is at these meetings, and I do believe that you'd be even more effective in your voice because you'd at least be speaking to people who can do something about your concerns. CUSAC is a standard. The administrators in this district have to work hard to ensure that, that they do work hard, to ensure the teachers, the administrators work very hard to ensure compliance with those standards, like in any job, when their standard is issued from, from the top. And, you know, CUSAC scores are available under Oprah. If you'd like to make an Oprah request, I'm sure that the business office can arrange to ensure that whatever the latest, you know, CUSAC category, I know that they don't all do them at once, and I know perhaps, you know, Paul Passerino could address specifically where you guys are in the CUSAC process, but CUSAC comes to different districts at different times throughout the year.
Our previous-
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you now.
Thank you. Our previous CUSAC scores, we're passing, I don't know them off the top of my head, they are published in a, in one of our Board of Education agendas, so we do report the, you know, the cumulative scores. The more comprehensive one obviously can be obtained via Oprah. Where we are in the current process, CUSAC is a three-year cycle. We are in the second year of that cycle, which means we are preparing to do the, the presentation, a presentation of our, what we're being requested, which is comprehensive from policy and planning to curriculum to personnel. So those records are usually shared during year three, so we're in the, we're in the gathering phase, if you will, of, of the program. Last year was the first year of CUSAC, it was also the last year of the previous cycle because it was delayed as a result of COVID, so we didn't do the presentation that we do in year three until last year. So last year was almost, could almost be viewed as a duel. So we presented the findings from year three, and we were in the process of being identified that we're in year one of CUSAC in our next cycle.
Do you remember if they were comfortably above 80?
I believe they were, off the top of my head, I don't want to misspeak at the meeting.
Okay, but we can find it.
We were, we were in the 80s.
You'll get, you'll get, there's a number and you'll get it, and you'll be able to see the categories you could see, and I, I know you guys, you, you focus on specific areas, and you have focused on those specific areas, these meetings, but you'll also see the incredible work that's being done across the district in areas I'm sure you agree with. And so, you know, I know that you tend to focus on this one area, in particular sex ed curriculum, diversity, equity, inclusion and things like that, and you'll see some of those areas reflected in CUSAC, but you'll also see the incredible work that's being done by the staff and the kids and the administrators in the district if you look at CUSAC, and maybe it'll, you know, be interesting to you in other ways as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bush, Mr. Passerino.
Mr. Velez?
Mr. Harris.
Press, while we're just waiting for someone else to come up to answer that question on CUSAC and to just put some greater color on it because I can't keep my mouth shut at any given night. We were high performing in our last cycle, meaning that in the five categories that CUSAC looks at, we were in 80 or above. And as Mr. Bush said, you could certainly look up the, you could Oprah, or undoubtedly it's online if you go to the Department of Education's website. We are high, we're considering a high performing school district because we did score an 80 or above in all five categories, so I just want to provide that color.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Elsie Caro, I'm from Colonia. I want to bring up, I know you're going to be frustrated again, but the sex ed curriculum. And I know that it's frustrating to you when you have parents that pretty much at every meeting would bring this up, and I want to address that specifically. I believe that the reason why, I know that this has been talked about probably within the last year, so it's, this isn't anything new, it's not a new topic, but I believe you're going to constantly get a new parent every month bringing this up because you did not inform us properly. And let me go into that further. During COVID lockdowns, the district proved how efficient you all are in communicating with us. You made sure that we knew how many people tested positive in the given week. You made sure to ask us about how we felt about being on quarantine, you know, children learning at home. You sent us questionnaires asking us how we felt about returning to school, how the safety, how, do we feel safe sending our children to school, how likely we would be to send our children to school or keep them home, how we felt about a hybrid schooling situation. I was very impressed by the communication that you showed. Why weren't we commun-, why didn't we have that same communication when it came to the sex ed curriculum? So this is also extremely important. And just like COVID, many people either thought it was not a big deal, while some people thought it was really horrible, right? So that was also controversial topic where people didn't want to wear masks, that people didn't want to go to school, people wanted to go to school, right? This is also a very controversial topic, and you failed to communicate the way you communicated with COVID. I believe that if you had communicated in the same manner, you probably have, initially have had more parents asking all of the questions, and all of our concerns would have been addressed a lot sooner. And also, Mr. Bush, how you said that coming here, you know, we would have more, we would get further if we go to Trenton, but the thing is that parents don't even know that we have that opportunity because a lot, I can tell you, I talk to people all the time and some parents still are in the dark, but if you communicate with us the way you did for COVID, I don't believe that that would be the case.
Okay, so let me just, if I can respond.
Mr. Bush?
Dr. Massimino's not, not available tonight, so I, I can answer maybe something that he would otherwise answer, and I know, you know, Mr. Passerino can, can talk about this if necessary with respect to communication, but let me just say this, and, and I know you may not agree with this, but I'm just saying as a matter of school district policy and, and law and the way that districts prioritize information, because there's so much information that parents need and to help them make decisions on behalf of their children. I think part of it is that, that there's been changes and alterations and modifications to sex ed curriculum for, for decades in New Jersey. And obviously, COVID, as we all know and have experienced, changed things in, in, from a health standpoint, because we never experienced anything like that. This is the, the first time, from a historical perspective, that parents have reacted, I think, not just here in Woodbridge, I mean, across the state, obviously, I think you know that, the way that they have. And so, you know, the district has done, the district has done what it is, is supposed to do with respect to information. I know as a parent, maybe you disagree with that, I'm just explaining to you kind of how, how we view this. The, the legal side of this is, is very simple. We have to do, we have to follow state standards, you know, in, in a nutshell, we have to follow state standards, and the state standards were changed slightly, which I think is what has some parents up in arms, and we all certainly understand that. What hasn't changed, and I know you didn't speak to this specifically, but what hasn't changed is a parent's right to opt out their child, you know, to opt out. As opposed to the COVID situation, if you really want to compare, families weren't necessarily able to send their kids to school under some of the circumstances, they were at different points, but to send their kids to school even when the schools were closed. So it was, it was, it was very different in that regard. I understand the analogy you're making, but I think we view that very differently, and I don't know if you want to talk about any of the communications that have gone out with this specifically.
First, I'd like to, you know, state that, you know, we do listen, you know, at these meetings, and, you know, your concerns are noted and, and we will take a look at it.
Appreciate that.
You know, we can, you know, we can absolutely, you know, respect your position in terms of feeling the school district failed in terms of communication, but, you know, we did communicate this curriculum like we have any other curriculum, you know, in terms of adoptions. We actually delayed our adoption to make sure that the schools had a additional opportunity to communicate with their, with their families. The idea was to make sure that traditionally we approve curriculum in the months of August so that the new curriculum is going to begin effective day one, when the students come back into school. We all know what the opening of school looks like in terms of teachers getting ready, you know, parents preparing their students, transitioning students from possibly elementary to middle school, so it's, it's fair to say there's a lot going on in, in the month of September, and understanding the response from the community, we wanted to make sure that at minimum our teachers were given the opportunity to talk to their families, because that's really where that communication needs to, needs to take place. So we didn't want to avoid that, we wanted to give the schools, we want to better equip our schools by giving our, our faculty and staff, you know, an additional few weeks before school got off and running to make sure that they themselves were comfortable with the adoption of the curriculum, had a chance to review it, had a chance to oversee it, express their concerns to their building administrators, express their concerns to us in central office, and then, you know, we, we, we did listen to our teachers, who, a lot of whom live in the, in the community, with the expectation then, that in that month of September and in those, in that opening of school, that parents would have the opportunity to ask those questions and it could be communicated in back-to-school night, open house night. You know, we also wanted to make sure that the parents understood and were given the opportunity to discuss those with their building administration, the counselors and the teachers, as they're the ones that are, you know, dealing with our children, you know, on a, on a day-to-day basis. So I, I, we listen to everything that you say, I mean, it's certainly something, you know, we'll, we'll look to, you know, we'll look at and reevaluate how we communicate our, you know, curriculums in the future and, you know, we can-
I would appreciate that, only because I, I didn't receive any kind of communication with any teachers from my son's school in reference to this. I found this out from watching the news and, you know, things like that, but any kind of direct communication from my son's school, I, I didn't get any of that. So that's when I started coming here, because I was like paying attention to what was going on in the media, and I don't want to hear about what's happening in the media, I want to hear it directly from you. I don't want to get my sources from the media.
But you know something that we, it's interesting, and I know this is not intended really to be back and forth, and we want to hear from you, but we, we try to make it so that everybody says what they have to say and then we'll try to respond.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely, but, but one thing that's very interesting about this, and it's, the media is a national media typically. Most of us watch national sources. There are some local sources, but New Jersey has precious few. We have NJ.com, we have the Home News Tribune, but we, we don't have the, there's a patch, I guess, right, here in Woodbridge?
Right.
But not every place has that, and again, we mostly get our information nationally. Many school boards throughout the country have incredible amounts of discretion on what their curriculum does or doesn't do. You know, there's this concept of home rule in New Jersey, we've talked about this with other members of the public before, it doesn't really exist in New Jersey the way it does in other places. We have more school districts, I think, here in New Jersey than they do in California, incredibly, certainly more than places like Maryland and Virginia, you know, nearby states, because they have county school districts, but everyone basically follows the same curriculum. There are some areas where there's discretion, but not much. And so, you know, what I, I think what's happening is there's a lot of national, national movement to get people to come to local school board meetings, because in places like Tennessee, maybe that's appropriate, because those people could actually do something about it. But what we're saying, and I know this may be disappointing to hear, is that in New Jersey it works differently. There's not a huge amount of discretion here, and you could lose points on CUSAC, you could have state aid withheld, there's all kinds of areas where we, they have to keep people following the same curriculum because that's how they decide, when they decide what they're going to do, that's how they make sure that, that everybody follows it. So again, I know that sounds disappointing-
So basically, go to Trenton.
Yeah, I mean, I'm saying that, and I, with all due respect, we, as a parent, I think everybody's glad you're here and expressing this to us, but we have to follow what the state tells us to do with some local flavor. But you can't like, for example, someone at some point suggested that they're being opt-in as opposed to knocked out, and maybe that was you, I don't remember a couple of months-
No, it was another, I know which parent it was, yeah.
Okay, but like, we, we wouldn't be able to do that. That would violate state law if we did that. You know, if someone brought us to court over that, we would lose. So those are the kinds of issues that we deal with. Boards are creatures of statute, and we will operate as an entity under the authority of the Department of Education in the state of New Jersey. So yes, it's Trenton, and look, I, I think we would all encourage you to go speak to other parents about going to Trenton and talking to them about your concerns. If the standard changed, we would change too.
Okay.
But we have to follow the standard.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
I do appreciate your time.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, I didn't get your name, ma'am.
My name is Elsie Caro, C-A-R-O.
And if you wouldn't mind, could you email me what your expectations would, were or are for the communication?
Absolutely.
So, because we talk about things very vaguely, and I'd really love to know the specifics of what you felt would have been an appropriate way for us to communicate to parents, because we are really interested in making sure we do a better job. You may not like the communication, but that being said-
I would appreciate that.
We still want to make sure that we do the best job we can.
Definitely.
Thank you.
I most definitely will. Thank you so much.
Just out of curiosity, can you explain your thinking and approach to only appointing an acting principal to Mobbie School One for the remainder of the year with the retirement of Barbara Baylog versus a full-time?
Is that going to be your only question?
That is my only question, only statement. Thank you.
Mr. Wolferman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Dr. Riley.
Hi. We are looking ahead at the construction that we have going on in the district, throughout the district, and some potential buildings that may be closing, you know, in particular, School 14, School 25, we're adding an addition on. So we may be losing a principal and somebody would need to go to another location, so we don't know of that, and there's also other movement throughout the district that we're, you know, unaware of at this time that may happen, so we're just keeping the position as acting.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up to that one? And, and I apologize, um, does, is the acting in place through the end of the year or will we see?
Yes, it's, it's from-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that part.
It's from January all the way through to the last day of-
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I've got a couple of questions and a couple of comments to make. Last Tuesday, I was at the council meeting, and we brought a question about the 45 schools to Mayor McCormick, and the thing was that, again, he said, like you said yourself, that school was not going to be built because they're too expensive to be built, and he wasn't sure there were people who'd approve an additional money to finish it, another $50 million. But again, what he said was that you did say, record that you spent $2.5 million, I believe, on the designing or what it was, architectural design, what it was, and then none of the money was spent to do cleanup of the property. That's my question was, did you spend any money cleaning up of the site or just a- That's my question was, did you spend any money to clean up of the site, or just architectural? But most important, which most of us were surprised over that night, he says that we don't own the property, you don't own the property, and he does not know who owns the property. And again, if we don't own anything of their property, how in the world could you start to design the building on somebody else's property that you know owns it? That was one of my questions. Is it possible, somebody must know. I mean, it's easy to find who owns it, but why is insane who owns it? Of course, who pays tax on it, he owns the property, right? That's the one question. Our second question, we talked about over here in the previous, people concerned about the sex education. Do we receive any additional funds from the state or government to put the thing in the curriculum of the school, our children? Do we get any additional money for that? And most important, how much time are you taking from the regular studies? I think it's more important, because up to all these years that we had, that we never had it, it'd be the right with our children and to raise the families. Nobody told us, we didn't learn in school, we learned something else. And how much time is going to take from the studies, which is science, med, what you want to call it? You know, how to expand, extend any hours of the time. And it is true, it's a possibility that the school would get additional funds, and the people there would be teaching that stuff with the access in salaries. And again, I want to go back about the safety of schools, safety. 25 schools have police officers, which is a great idea. My concern is, when you talk about the off-duty police, you know, they work hard. You don't know how hard it could be any day that they would be working 24/7. Is there going to be any kind of a time between the one shift from the regular job to go to work at the schools? Because I think it's most important, when you come to send police officers in schools, they will be alert, relaxed, ready to do the job. It's more important probably than doing the traffic. But again, as you know, we have lots and lots of young men coming from military. They're very capable, ready, whatever do. And most of, a lot of them are actually police officers, or what you want to call a military. Can we get some of those young people beside the police department to hire, not just the Woodbridge, all over the state? Because they are the one that trained for any kind of a, what you call unfortunate what happens in the world today, which definitely would be the terrorism. So can we look into something like that? But most important, I don't think it's wise, if a man is working night shift, and next comes home with half an hour, he's got to go back to school, take care of the school. So that's my couple of questions. But most importantly is, most important question would be, did we spend any money to clean up on the 45 site on Rhode Avenue? Can anybody answer it?
Is that all, you're done, Mr. Vitarek? That's all your questions? That's it?
That's it.
No more questions? Okay. A couple of them I can address, and then the ones I can't, I'll field out. The 4 and 5 property, we went over that quite a few times. The Board of Education never owned that property, never did. We wouldn't pay any money for cleanup on property we didn't own. It was anticipated that at some point, we may put a school there, and we allocated, or spent money on architectural drawings and such, but we didn't spend any money on the cleanup of School 4 and 5. As far as the police officers working the schools, the police department, and I know, because I worked there, has a policy in place, and officers are forbidden from working eight hours before their shift. So the chances that you would get a fatigued officer there are, would not happen. We have things in place, and we have supervisors that check on the officers that are at post, to make sure they're, have the proper equipment, that they're physically able to perform the function. So, and we have, we've been using extra-duty officers, sworn police officers in that capacity for probably 15 or 20 years, if I could go back, or more than that, probably 40 years. It's worked. I can't elaborate on all our security policies, how many officers we're using, but right now, it's adequate, but we're always expanding on cameras and officers we're deploying when where they're needed and where they're not. Okay? And then on the curriculum, as far as how much time is allotted for health or sex ed, maybe Mr. Pausarino could elaborate on that?
Mr. Vitarek, the time that's allotted to any of our classes, and I'll speak specifically to the elementary schools, because their schedule is a little more complex than our middle schools and our high schools, who follow what's known as a block schedule. So there's a specific amount of time, they take a course, and that course is defined once you get into sixth grade. So I'm going to speak to you specifically about the allotment of time in the elementary schools. The time that's required in each course is really a derivative of those standards. So in some cases, there's a certain amount of time that's required, you know, for activities to be covered. So there's no more time given to one over the other, more than there is than a daily time requirement. When you're talking about health and physical education, there's a minimum standard that I believe is a comprehension, a comprehensive one that equates to about 30 minutes a day. So that, if they go to the gym one day, that accounts for the 30 minutes. If the teacher teaches a health lesson that day, that accounts to the 30 minutes. If the school does an assembly that's, you know, related to, let's say, fire safety, right? That's a part of our health and physical education standards, that school assembly would count towards the time that is needed as far as the curriculum is determined for the time in those classes. So it's really nuanced specifically to the subject area when we're talking about the elementary schools. Language arts gets a certain amount, and there's a balance there. And it's, there's certain understandings written within the curriculum that make accommodations for weeks where we have a shortened week, weeks where we have early dismissal, right? Could have snow, could have rain, weeks where we have shortened schedules, weeks where we have half-days, weeks where we have parent conferences. So based on the amount of time that the school day has that day, you know, there are reasonable accommodations that are made within those curriculums.
So what you're saying is it would not affect the regular studies of the children?
That's correct.
That's correct. I mean, my concern is my grandchildren go to a lot of different countries, but again, I find out that people in the foreign countries, for some reason, that we're so far behind compared with our three grandchildren when they come back to the United States, that they're usually a year or two years ahead of the old process.
Thank you, Mr. Vitarek. Unfortunately, your time's up. Thank you.
Good evening. James DeBrowski, Perthamboy Area Branch and double ACP. I'd like to begin with a short statement from our community's oldest civil rights organization. The Perthamboy Area Branch and double ACP condemns the inclusion of a pro-slavery Confederate group in Woodbridge Township parades. We call on Woodbridge elected and appointed officials to join us in standing against white supremacy in all of its forms. The Seventh Virginia Cavalry Company A was formed by the Confederacy in 1861 at the start of the Civil War to fight for the enslavement of black people, who they deemed to be property and not full human beings. The treasonous Confederate states had seceded from the United States to fight against us in the deadliest war in our country's history. An estimated 360,222 U.S. troops, many from right here in New Jersey, were killed by Confederate traitors. When they thankfully lost the war in 1865, the defeated Confederate veterans started the Ku Klux Klan, and thus began the racist "Lost Cause" ideology, which sadly still exists today, as exhibited by groups like the one marching in our community's parades. One need only visit the Seventh Virginia Cavalry Company A Facebook page and see how the group honors and romanticizes the Confederacy. They even just recently posted a photo of themselves posing on school property, right here in front of this very building, Ross Street School Number 11. How embarrassing. This "Lost Cause" group tries to pass themselves off as a Civil War history group, but as mentioned at our last meeting, we wouldn't have a Nazi troop marching as a World War II history group, and we shouldn't have a Confederate troop marching as a Civil War history group. White supremacy must never be honored and must be condemned in all of its forms, period. While I still haven't received a response from anyone to my last email from November 16th, at our last meeting on November 17th, I was told that this issue warranted a discussion between you all with Woodbridge Mayor John McCormick and his council members. Board member Dan Harris kindly volunteered to facilitate that conversation with the rest of the McCormick administration, including his colleague, Board Vice President Brian Molnar, who was absent last meeting, but who also serves as Director of the Recreation Department, and decides who does and who doesn't get to march in Woodbridge parades. So I'm here tonight on behalf of our community's oldest civil rights organization, hoping we will receive some good news for the new year, that this administration is indeed committed to anti-racism, and that the Confederate troop, group, whatever, will no longer be included in Woodbridge Township parades from 2023 moving forward. Mr. Molnar, feel please.
Is that your only question, Mr. DeBrowski?
Yes.
That's it?
That is my job as the Recreation Director, not my job as a Board of Ed member. I will not comment on that during this body.
Okay. Would anyone care to comment on that issue?
No, the board's not going to comment on that issue. Thank you, Mr. DeBrowski.
No, then you know what? I have two minutes left.
No, you forward.
No, 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 I have two minutes left.
Mr. DeBrowski?
No, no, this is, no, I have time.
Mr. DeBrowski?
You said you were done.
You were asked by the Board President if you were done, and we respected that.
I'm not done. Okay, that depends on your response. This is wrong, this is unacceptable. And if you're okay with this, or okay with our students being subjected to marching with this group, then you're clearly not committed to anti-racism. Just as there is no excuse for your refusal to condemn the Proud Boys targeting our meetings, there is no excuse for your refusal to stand against a Confederate group marching in our town, especially with our students. I sincerely hope that for New Year's, you consider making the resolution that instead of standing with the mayor, who refuses to affirm that Black Lives Matter, and who outrageously calls our nation's largest racial justice movement awful, you start exemplifying our school district's anti-racism pledge, and start standing against racism in our community. Black Lives Matter. And I'll give the remainder of my time for a response. Somebody's got to say something to this.
We don't have any comment, Mr. DeBrowski. You said you were finished. Let the next person speak, please.
I have 45, I have 45, no, I'll take my full time. With all due respect, you have yours, I have mine, I'm entitled to mine.
That's not, that's not how it works.
That is how it works. I get five minutes.
No, you have five minutes, and then when you're done with your comment, you don't just get to sit there and waste it. Do you have anything else you want to tell us?
Okay, I'll tell you something, Mayor Bush. I'm a little disappointed in your hypocrisy. You called out the European Heritage Association when they marched in South Plainfield. Why wouldn't you call out the Proud Boys when they came to Woodbridge?
Respectfully, I'm a lawyer, and this is my client.
Okay.
Okay? And I represent my client. That's my responsibility under my rules of ethics. So please, I understand whatever you're saying to me personally, I appreciate what you're saying, but here, I'm an attorney for the Board of Education. You got to, you got to respect that.
Well, the Highland Park Board of Education, you're attorney for them too, they passed the resolution against the power plant. Why did you say Woodbridge can't pass the resolution against the power plant? Can you answer that one?
We have no standing on that, and we won't comment on it.
Okay. Happy holidays, happy new year. We got to do better in 2023.
Mr. Molnar?
Yeah, Mr. President, you know what? I think I should make some sort of comment. The Seventh Virginia Cavalry, you do their history, I read their history too. Let's take it in the context of the gentleman who marched in the parade. The gentleman that marched in the parade did not fight in the Civil War. The gentlemen that marched in the parade do not have pro-slavery points of view. They are Civil War historians who are just portraying a regiment, no different than an actor on TV if he has a role of playing a Nazi, or playing a Confederate soldier in a movie. There are a lot of actors that have played German soldiers, there have been a lot of actors that have played Confederate soldiers in movies. It's a role. That's all it is. You're talking about the person. None of these individuals who marched served in the Civil War. Let's make one other point. They did not carry a Confederate flag. They carried, they carried an American flag. They are just a novelty group. They are a historical group. Then Mr. DeBrowski said that I said they'd been marching for over 30 years. The paper that I read from, from the script that I got from the Veterans Commission, was that they ran for 33 years this Civil War Living History Weekend at Parker Press, that used to represent Union soldiers and Confederate soldiers, and it was a history about what the battlefield was like and what the soldiers had to live in, in a battlefield during the Civil War. And then he tries to bring my comments on the review stand to Ed McGwin's comments from a council meeting in February, where all of a sudden, he started to bring up the Confederate flag somehow, considering the Confederate flag wasn't even at the parade. The Seventh Virginia has participated in many parades, Veterans Holiday Parade, St. Patrick's Parade, to name a few. They are a novelty group, not slave-owning sympathizers. Mr. DeBrowski then says, well, why don't we have a Nazi group march? Don't ever compare the Nazis to the Civil War. Slavery was a black eye on this country, probably the worst black eye this country had. But the Nazis were a group that were out to exterminate a race of people through murder and torture. So let's get that straight. Mr. DeBrowski, you had your opportunity, you had your opportunity. Slavery was the worst black eye in this country, as I said, horrible and inexcusable. When you look at a Confederate soldier, just go back to President Obama's speech, when he was at Charleston after the murder in the black church, when he was given the eulogy for Clementine Pickney. And he talked about the Confederate flag being the lightning rod, and you're absolutely right about the Confederate flag being the lightning rod. But he also said that by removing the Confederate flag from the state Capitol, it's not an act of political correctness, or to disgrace the valor of the Confederate soldier. So even President Obama, who was African-American, recognized the valor of the soldier that fought for his country. Might not liked his point of view, but he fought for this country. He fought for their way of life. It wasn't another country, Mr. DeBrowski. See, and this is the thing. Listen, and I'm going to sum it up like this. You also talked about that there were a lot of students that were at that parade, essay winners. They were there. They were there to celebrate the heroes that fought for our freedoms, who fought for us allowed to have this open dialogue we're having today. The same freedom you enjoy by not standing for the National Anthem, by not standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. See, you like freedom of speech and your First Amendment when it pertains to you, but there are different points of view that go with that First Amendment. I don't agree with everybody's point of view and what they do, but that's your point of view. That's all. Let's not lose context that these were gentlemen. They were not Confederate soldiers. They are playing a part. That's all. They're not going out there, they didn't have slaves with them, they didn't have the Confederate flag. They were a novelty group portraying soldiers in a history group, just like all throughout the North. They have Confederate groups, they have Northern groups. That's the Civil War. It's a fascination that this country has. If not, then why don't you ban Ken Burns, who did a documentary on the Civil War that was award-winning? It's there, it's part of our history. We learn from it. This is what we do. The Seventh Virginia Cavalry used to have the Rhode Island group march with them, but unfortunately, these gentlemen are up in age and some pass on. So that's what they're left with. So yeah, they marched. They didn't march in the Holiday Parade, okay? Does that make you feel better? I don't know. I don't run that parade. I run this parade with the Veterans Alliance. We go, we look at the applications that come in, and then we approve them, and that's it. And I'm not going to get into this debate with you, because I didn't answer your email, because if you had emailed me as a board member about an issue your child was having in school with curriculum or something like that, I would answer. I'm not going to get back into this tit and tat with you over your political points of view and your social points of view, because it's never going to end. You will never be satisfied with the answer you get. And I hate to be this way, but everybody on this dais, and I know they're saying it to themselves, it's the truth. You will never be satisfied until you get the answer that you want.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Molnar.
And I'm sorry for the gentleman who's waiting.
Good evening. Tom Mares, Woods, New Jersey. Again, I found myself digressing from what I wanted to say. I just want to thank you. That was an elegant response to somebody that is a moron. He does this at town council meetings, he comes here, he parades you, he parades the mayor, he parades the town council. mayor, he berates the town council with the same goblet go all the time. It's just pure race-baiting, and you're right. He wants his First Amendment's rights, nobody else should have theirs. Thank you for what you said to him. I fully support it, and I think this town supports it, and actually, he's finding out nobody in this town has any credence to anything he has to say. But getting back to school business, um, there's been some discussions at the town council meeting the other night, as well as this evening, about the, the bond that went forth for schools four and five. And I believe, according to Mayor McCormick, the state is now intervening in that and looking at it too, from a legal standpoint, and how you have to treat it. Have you come to a, an arrangement, or when do you think you will have something you can present to the public, and how you intend to handle that bond issue? Also, is there a code of account by which you have charged anything that went forth to the new school four and five that I could Oprah? Uh, I don't want to just make it a general request. I want to know specifically, is there a code that I can get? I can perhaps contact you and ask you for that code, and then I can write the Oprah accordingly, so we're specific as to what we're looking for. Is that acceptable? Okay. Also, Mr. Harris made some comments about teachers, and I know Mr. London would have liked to said a little bit more about it, and he ran out of time, but I think part of the problem, and I've heard this from teachers that are leaving, teachers that want to leave, and I've heard it from students that are going to college, who frankly say they have no interest in meeting a teacher. And part of that is because of the heavy-handedness of the government. New Jersey, as Mr. Bush put, put out, being one of the more authoritarian states when it comes to what teachers can and cannot do, and they're getting fed up with being told, this is how you're going to teach and what you're going to teach. It wasn't that way when I was in school, and I'm sure it wasn't that way when most of you were in school either, at least not to the degree that we're seeing now, where there is no wiggle room that you have to comply with the governor's mandates and that he changes the school boards around at the state level to suit his agenda. I think people are starting to recognize that and get very fed up with it. So again, I, I think there's a reason there's a teacher shortage, and certainly not because of money, it's because people are being driven away from it or driven out of the profession, and that is a shame because, you know, the children are our future. Whitney Houston sang to that, and I'm a firm believer in it. That's one of the reasons I've tried running for the board several times, to join you and to work with you, not to necessarily oppose you, but to actually bring perhaps some fresh ideas and insights into it. But again, I would say, I think we need to stand up, and I think this board needs to stand up to the governor and listen to the people because you are supposed to be an independent board, not a function of Governor Murphy's ideologies. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maris. As far as the question with the bond issue, maybe Mr. Wolfman?
Mr. President, I think we're still working on determining.
Yeah. And, and, and Mr. Maris, you'll know when, when the board is acting on the bond issue because we have to send it to, uh, you know, we have to make a decision on what we want to do, but the board would have to take action, and take action is not like a behind-the-scenes thing. We'll have to do it right in front of your eyes, so, just so you're aware. I mean, when, when we develop a plan, you'll, you'll know.
We could put that before the public.
Yeah, it, it would be a public action. Every action this board has to be in public.
I'd actually like to see it, and I may push for it, that it becomes a referendum item on a ballot as to whether we go forward with it or something else. But that's another subject.
Whatever the board, whatever the board does, we will talk about. I know, I mean, I, you, you, you know, like, there's, there's some planning going on, but nothing that can be discussed publicly yet because there's no decisions being made.
Premature, I suppose.
I, I do, I want to, do you have more things that I?
Sure. Okay. Well, before I close out on this, but you do that.
Okay. So I just want to, um, to speak to, I, I, I know what you were trying to say, but I was not suggesting that, that the governor is authoritarian. I just wanted to be very clear about that. What I was saying is that there's a universal standard in New Jersey that school districts are required to follow. I know you may define that differently. I understand that I may have just, in your mind, made your argument for you, but I'm explaining to you that it's a universal standard that's felt and thought based on experts to be the best standard that can possibly be applied. Obviously, you and maybe some others don't agree with it, but that's what happens. And, and, and not to give you a history lesson because you know your history well, as do many other people here, but New Jersey has the, has one of the strongest, and some people believe the strongest, there's Law Review articles written about this, executive in the United States. It's just our system of government. Our 1947 state constitution, which was developed in New Brunswick at the Rutgers Gym, actually, um, is the, is the, is the, has the strongest executive system in the United States. And so I beg to differ about the fact that this was not the case when you were growing up. The governor of New Jersey, the office of the executive branch of New Jersey, excuse me, the office of governor and the executive branch of New Jersey, including the Department of Education, has always had incredible strength as it relates to the actions of the communities.
And it always wasn't so heavy-handed either. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. And again, I'm not trying to talk about the politics of it, I'm just talking specifically about the history and the law. Um, the 1947 constitution is something, and it's something that other states have tried to emulate because of the strength of the executive. And when you have that gubernatorial election, as you know, it's a very important election here in New Jersey.
Yep.
As a result. So I just want to make sure that that was something that, I knew you'd find that interesting.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maris.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
My name is Vikrant Gaiqad, and I reside in Island. I represent Hindu Swamshak Sangha, HSS, Woodbridge Chapter. As we come to the close of this calendar year, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the board and especially Mr. Kendall Ali for all the support you have been providing throughout the year. As a, as a reflect on the year passed by, it gives me immense pleasure and satisfaction about the various activities Woodbridge Township School District and HSS have jointly executed this year. Following, following is a quick summary of key activities. We started the calendar year 2022 by hosting yoga thon with three yoga events across Colonia Middle School, Island Middle School, and Woodbridge High School. We had over 230 participants registered for the yoga thon and around 150 attended across these three yoga thon events. In May, we conducted Teacher Supplication Day where 21 teachers were fally circulated by their students. During the month of May, as part of the Asian American Pacific calendar heritage month, we launched Darshana, a traveling exhibition covering various facets of Hindu civilization like festivals, medicine, art, science, et cetera. We got a fantastic response from the school district and the Woodbridge community overall. Around 3,500 students, teachers, parents, and officials enthusiastically participated in the exhibition across various venues, including seven schools from the district of, from the district, Woodbridge Laboratory, and through community events like DEI Showcase and Woodbridge Police Night Out Event. Following, during the month of October and early November, we conducted Seva Diwali Food Drive with participations from 21 schools, five more compared to last year. Throughout the drive, students, principals, teaching staff, and parents responded very positively. A total of 13,000 pounds of food was collected in, in space of three weeks, which was delivered to Woodbridge Food Pantry, Vifit, Woodbridge. We ended the year by conducting yoga training sessions for PE teachers in preparation for the Indian Heritage Month. We also are working closely with DEI and HRC to make Indian Heritage Month more inclusive. This was indeed a fantastic year for our joint collaboration, and again, thank you for, uh, thank you for, to the board, Dr. Massimino and Mr. Kendall Ali for your partnership with Hindu Swamshak Sangha, and for giving us opportunity to make Woodbridge community more inclusive. On behalf of, of the community and HSS USA, I also want to thank all of you for moving two resolutions today. First, about the collaboration on Seva Diwali, and secondly, by adopting January as an Indian Heritage Month. As we start New Year, we are launching the Health for Humanity Yoga Thon. HSS first launched Health for Humanity Yoga Thon in 2007 to create awareness about yoga and its advantages in fostering a healthy body, mind, and spirit for any practitioner, regardless of age, faith, gender, or ethnicity. Health for Humanity Yoga Thon has received numerous proclamations from elected representatives, officials, and administrations throughout the country. 2023 is the 16th year for the Health for Humanity Yoga Thon. I'm pleased to announce that just like last year, Woodbridge Township School District and HSS are bringing yoga thon to the community by organizing yoga sessions in, uh, on January 7th, January 14th, and January 21 at three schools, namely, Colonia Middle School, Island Middle School, and Woodbridge Middle School, respectively. The sessions will be between 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM and will be conducted by instructors who are yoga cert, yoga certified. The sessions are open to everyone in the community and are free of charge. I would like to take this opportunity to invite all the board members to attend one of those sessions. Additionally, from January 28th, in collaboration with Woodbridge Public Laboratory, we are launching open yoga program in Woodbridge Laboratory, uh, the main laboratory, uh, location. As part of this program, we will conduct 90-minute yoga sessions covering key concepts of yoga, physical postures, breathing techniques, and meditation. This program again will be free of charge to the community and, and, and will run for the entire year, uh, every Saturday. Again, thank you for, uh, thank you for, uh, thank you to Board of Education, Dr. Massimino, Mr. Kendall Ali, and for their partnership. Looking forward to continued collaboration with the school district, wishing you all happy and prosperous in the year.
Thank you very much. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Mr. Velez?
Mr. Trebroski?
Just briefly, I wanted to thank Mr. Velez, as this is his last meeting. Not everybody in the public understands the complexity and the challenges of being a board president. I just wanted to thank Mr. Velez as he handled this year, which has been quite challenging on many levels, with style, grace, calm, and was able to deal with situations that a lot of other people would have certainly lost their cool. I don't want to go on and make him turn red because red's not his best color, but I just wanted to thank you, Joe. You've been outstanding, and I truly appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jonathan. Appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As has been become a tradition of an outgoing Board of Education president, the collusion, at the conclusion of his final board meeting, I wish to provide a recap of the progress made this year. Like much of the past two and a half years, this time of year, we were in a constant state of monitoring COVID cases, asking ourselves if it's safe for the students to go back to school. For the year 2022, I'm pleased to report that our students, faculty, and staff have been in-person learning and growing. I'm pleased to report that the district's financial picture is strong and getting stronger. The Woodbridge econ, economy remains vibrant and growing, allowing our school budget to maintain current programs and services, as well as allow our administration to continue to invest in our students and overall learning experience. The district continues to receive an increasing share of state aid from Trenton. We are now two years away from our full phase in. Additional state aid means less reliance on local property taxpayers like yourselves. A stable economy and increasing aid from Trenton has allowed our district to address its finer points. Additional funding allowed our district to budget for new speech-language specialists, occupational physical therapists, and paraprofessionals. Improved mental health services with new clinical social workers and an additional guidance counselor at each of our five middle schools. Additional resources in special education for qualified incoming preschoolers, additional English as a second language supports, additional autism classes, additional in-class resource classes, as well as expanding gifted and talented opportunities. We replaced, the replacement of unit ventilators to bring our classrooms to the highest level of air quality and comfort, along with dozens of other capital improvements. The district continued its commitment to taxpayers in February when we refinanced our 2012 referendum debt, saving our taxpayers $1.1 million. With the exception of the new Abanelce Elementary School Four and Five, all of our major 2017 and 2020 referendum projects have begun or been completed, improving the learning experience for nearly 14,000 students. We continue to partner with the Woodbridge Township Municipal Government to provide additional programs and services to families while maintaining, while maximizing taxpayer dollars, including but not limited to the continuation of our shared service agreements in over two dozen areas from, from information technology to building maintenance to athletic facilities. Dozens of summer enrichment classes, three after-school centers, now including some limited transportation. And throughout the spring, the strong relationship between our district and the McCormick administration shined brightest, demonstrating that when government works together, the people get what they expect. After a stressful waiting period, the district learned through professional scientists that health experts from the Jersey Department of Health and Environmental Protection that Colonia High School was indeed free of radiation and safer occupancy. I once again thank Dr. Massimino, Mayor McCormick, and your administrations, administrations for your steadfast leadership in your actions and communications with the public. In September, the board received the great news that it once again received its status as a high-performing school district with the state's trian, tri-annual Quality Single Accountability Continuum, known as QSAC, the State Uniform Compliance Review of all districts in the areas of instruction and program, fiscal management, governance, operation, and personnel. Just this month, our security office announced $1 million total saved from its efforts to remove non-resident students from our student rolls. Disenforcement protects our taxpayers and maintains appropriate class size. I thank the administration for continued cooperation and diligence on behalf of the entire Woodbridge Township community. I'd also like to thank our faculty, our staff, and their union representatives for their partnership and cooperation. And thank my fellow board members for electing me as president. It was truly an honor to lead this board, and I, at the end, I wish you all a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you. Will the chair, at their end, entertain a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
A motion by Mr. Trebroski, second by Mr. Harris.